Application for a certificate of appropriateness. This is 140 Broadway, the former Marine Midland Bank Building, an individual landmark. Docking number 166653, a mid-20th century modern office tower designed by Skidmore, Owings &amp; Merrill and built in 1964 to 68. The application is to install storefront infill and alter the base of the building.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Hillary Paget, Preservation Department staff. This property is located on the block bounded by Broadway, Liberty Street, Nassau Street, and Cedar Street. And proposed work is in this corner of the building, on Liberty Street and Nassau Street. And the applicant is proposing to install new commercial entrances at the ground floor at the north of this corner of the building, only along Nassau and Liberty Street. The design team is here to present the application.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Bill, we've been waiting quite a while. Seems to me that we spent most of the morning within 100 feet of Commissioner Glenn's house. Now we are moving to a different borough and arriving right next door to his office. It seems to be a tease. So this is 140 Broadway. This is the Broadway side with the equitable building next to it to the south. SOM 1969 with the Noguchi cube original tube design immediately in front. As Hillary mentioned, so this is the Broadway side. The proposal before you today is here sort of at the back of the building at the corner of Nassau Street and around the corner to Liberty Street where it is proposed to convert to retail some existing spaces which are now basically sort of service and circulation and ancillary spaces to the major building tenant, Mrs. Brown Brothers Harrington on the upper floors. Here is a view of the Nassau Street side. This is from Chase Manhattan Plaza, another SOM building right next door. And this is the area where the proposed work would be. Here again is the Broadway side. This is the Nassau and Liberty Street area. The original entries to this building are now gone. They were replaced in 1999, 2000 by these polished metal storefronts and exterior revolving doors on Cedar Street. Here is the Liberty Street side. And this is the Nassau Street side. It's these three bays and this bay turning the corner to Liberty where the proposed work is. There is already a single door here that is a revolving door that dates to 1980 and provides a secondary entrance to Brown Brothers Harrington. We are proposing three more doors, one centered in each one of these bays, and then a fourth door here in this bay. That is the bay cornered around Liberty Street where we're proposing that fourth door. The rest of the context on Liberty Street, service entrance to the building, Louver and HVAC bay immediately next to the one where we're proposing. Here again is the area of the proposed work. So this is Nassau Street elevations, existing and proposed. There is that 1980 Brown Brothers Harrington revolving door, but we are proposing same dimensions. However, because these would be retail doors, we are proposing in each bay two three-foot doors, code compliant three-foot doors with side lights and a transom and transom bar above. You are seeing signage here. The signage is proposed on interior sockets that are two feet back. So we'll need to see if we can view that at staff level. The signage should be viewed at staff level. There are some windows for the Liberty Street door. This is the east entry on Cedar Street, just around the corner from that Brown Brothers Harrington door. This is the one that we are really taking our design cues from, and we look closely at the details here. Basically, the only real difference between what we're proposing and this door is that because the doors can't extend more than 18 inches out and they're three-foot doors, we are proposing to recess them 18 inches rather than have them flush.
Bill, excuse me for the interruption, but is that true too on a plaza or just on the?
That's our understanding. Okay. And there is a proposed plan and elevation. And this is a little bit difficult to read. I think the next one is probably a bit better. So this is a typical door in the open position. So that is the entry would be there. We're proposing a very slight change, using the same paving materials, a very slight change so that there's a little bit of a slope for drainage right there. And then here is the 18-inch recess. There is the side light. And here we are proposing a solid metal rather than a glazed condition. And the metal will be the same dark anodized to match the exterior vocabulary of the rest of the building. Just incidentally, we had thought of the possibility of glazing here. The problem is that there is a very substantial existing steel tube. And the only place where we could possibly have glazed is there and would have ended up with a little 18-inch glazing, which probably would have called more attention to itself rather than be transparent. So here is the existing sidewalk condition where it is horizontal. We're proposing to reset the stones so that there is that very slight drainage wash. And here in section is the transom bar of the door. And then this is that two-foot recessed interior soffit with the applied lettering on its face. Another condition, there's one of these bays that would have stairs, so internal stairs. So we're just providing a section of that. So here is a rendering of what's proposed. This again is the Nassau Street side turning the corner to the Liberty Street side. There's the existing door. Here are the three new doors on Nassau and the one proposed new door on Liberty. And there is another rendering of the Nassau Street side.
May I ask a question? Sorry. Go ahead.
The reason for introducing these doors is because you're creating retail spaces, is that correct?
Sure.
And I think that's great and it'll activate the street. That's wonderful. But in your plans, you show two retail spaces, but you have multiple sets of doors. Do you need that many?
Well, it's, we think we might. The ones that we're really strongest about keeping would be the two on the corner and the one here immediately next to the Brown Brothers door. The one in the center is perhaps not as crucial as the other three.
And the reason why you want the two at the corner is it's both for the same retail space?
Right. But to provide, because they're really kind of two different environments, the Nassau Street side and the Liberty Street side. The Liberty Street side has more of a sort of service quality. And you kind of, when you see one entry, you don't see the other. So I think it's important to have at that one corner unit entries on both sides.
Okay, yes. Addie and then Michael.
I understand that the revolving doors with the 140 were installed, as you say, in the 90s. But other than that, it seems that the design intent here on the facade of this building is that there should not or are not transom lines cut through, horizontal through the glass floors. And so I'm just, the answer to this question is cost, I'm assuming. But you're going to doors that are seven foot three, and I'm just wondering why you're not proposing doors that are 11 feet, which goes to the full underside of the metal?
Well, the reason for that, I think, is pretty simple, that there are two existing doors that date to 1980. One is here at this corner and then right around the corner on Cedar Street side, and they both have those transom bars. So what we're really, we're sort of choosing an existing vocabulary to try and match. I don't think we would succeed in having new doors look the same as display windows. I think we would create a sort of more visible condition if we added yet another vocabulary.
Why would that be another vocabulary? I don't think I understand. If there are no horizontal elements, but if they are, the fixed panels as well as the operable panels were 11 feet tall?
You're going to, first of all, if they're going to be doors, you're going to end up with larger verticals on either side. It just seems to me you would end up with doors that are pretending to be display windows when you already have an existing vocabulary that's, in our view, quite harmonious with the design of the building, which provides a different situation.
Would you really need those vertical?
Would you really need those vertical, thicker vertical bands if they were, for instance, pivot doors?
I don't.
Pivot systems?
I haven't designed the doors, nor could I, but I'm just.
Michael?
Detail question for you. Maybe you're not the person to answer this. The Cedar Street door, the side lights are actually quite open and delicate. The outside of the side lights are described by the vertical mullion within the window itself. The new side lights are actually rather clunky and thick, an additional enframento from that original Cedar Street. Why is that and is it necessary?
Could we have the architect speak to those questions?
The architect is here, Walter Dwyer.
Thank you.
Walter?
I'm Walter Dwyer.
Yes, could you respond to the question, please?
There seems to be, in the original, this mullion describes the outside of this side light. Okay. And it's very thin here. Your new side lights have additional enframento that makes them rather thick and a departure from that vocabulary.
And I think those are on, if I'm not mistaken, these are on the surface, right? Flush with, this is not recessed.
That's okay.
Right. So the other one, because we were recessing the doors so that they wouldn't whack people in a phase as you access past it, it's sort of a framework to build those doors and set them in. And that's why it's not, could we have done it with, perhaps eliminating the corner mullions and do it and do butt glass and so on?
Just somehow, it seems that that additional enframento at the side light appears to be unnecessary, even though you're turning the corner.
So we have a, if you look at this in Brooklyn, we have a transom town.
Well, that's the other thing. On the originals, it runs all the way up to that transom. On this one, you've got an additional rail at the top, which seems unnecessary.
Except that we were following, I think we were using the down-low town entrance detail, and the one to the side is sort of the detail that we were trying to copy.
And I think.
You're not talking about this one then, correct? You're talking about the other one?
Yes, the one, because this is on the, this is on Broadway.
You see what I'm saying? I mean, this is very light.
Right.
And talks about glass. This talks about frame.
Right. Because, and I think a cheap reason for that is because we were setting them in as opposed to having them in the surface.
Michael, I'm sorry, I'm a little unsure. This, so this is existing.
These tubes basically are stainless steel with a dark bronze or black durnatic cover. And so because this was on the inside before, now it changes to the exterior because these are recessed. So what we've done here, and it was Bill's point of why we didn't make them glass, is that ultimately we wound up with a piece of glass about eight inches that we felt down. It's kind of prison-like. So we decided to just clad this with the black durnatic finish so that it would be just a clean, unblemished belt.
That's not what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about back there. And it could be that this drawing is not as accurate as it could be, because that seems like much more than two inches on this drawing. And it's got a head rail that is not on the Cedar Street doors that also helps to open that up and make it more about glass than about frame. That's all. I'm just wondering if that can be.
Diana?
Yeah, I think that Michael and Addie and myself are all thinking, well, I know you're trying to imitate the original door, but one, it just seems like perhaps it's not exactly the same. But secondly, that it's all about trying to achieve a somewhat more minimalist sense of these doors because that's the vocabulary of the building. And can we just, what would you do if you weren't hampered by, I'll call it hampered, but you don't have to worry about what the existing doors are? You propose a door that really has, best fits the character of the building. Where would you go with it, you know?
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we take testimony and then explore that?
Just one more question, if you'd just please. Is there an image of the original 1969 door treatment, the Gordon Bunshaft door treatment? There must be. I mean.
Maybe we should call.
1969, not 1869.
We haven't found it.
I wonder if she knows. She said she worked on the building for several times. I don't know if at that period, but.
All right. So, Bill, there's no drawings from, considering it's a modern building, we just haven't found any drawings of the doors in details?
We can look further.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll take testimony.
Barbara Zay of the Historic Districts Council. HDC finds the proposed materials and proportions of the new doorways to be appropriate, but feels that the proposed recesses break up the plane more than necessary. We urge the commission to require that these entrances be flush with the rest of the curtain wall. The easternmost bay on Cedar Street presently has a doorway that is flush with the base and would provide an ideal model for the new doorways. Also, given that the applicant is only proposing two retail spaces, it would seem that two new sets of doors would suffice, thus reducing the number of cuts into the historic fabric.
Thank you. John Arbuckle.
I'm John Arbuckle, president of Documomo New York Tri-State. We are a local chapter of an international organization working in over 50 countries around the world to identify, document, and protect building sites and neighborhoods of the modern movement. 140 Broadway, originally the Marine Midland Building, was acclaimed at its completion by the leading architecture critics of the era and remains today among the finest modernist office buildings in New York City. Our organization presented testimony in support of designating 140 Broadway an individual landmark in 2013, wholeheartedly and enthusiastically endorsing it. Pritzker Prize winner Gordon Bunshaft's elegant minimal trapezoidal prism presents a challenge to sympathetic modification, as any deviation from its impeccably detailed flush surface threatens to compromise the integrity of the building's design. The proposed new entrances present such a potential threat. Most disturbingly, the new doorways are designed with deep recesses inconsistent with the building's original design. We recommend the designers utilize the vocabulary of the existing building, replicating the flush doorway detail in the easternmost bay of Cedar Street, as HDC also suggested and as appears to be proposed by the designers. Or at most recessing the new doors at the back face of the existing storefront mullions, as in other existing conditions. Introducing so many new entrances makes their impact all the greater. One entrance to each of the two new retail spaces would seem to be sufficient. The building's design vocabulary is limited, but we believe it can accommodate modifications if the new doorways are designed in accordance with that vocabulary. And we respectfully request the commissioners directly, applicant, to do so. Thank you.
Any other speakers on the second? All right. We did receive some.
Sorry. Any speakers? Okay. We did receive a written testimony from Neighborhood Preservation Center that recommended disapproval, as well as John Jurej, who's an advisor to HDC, who recommended also disapproval, but comments included that there were too many sets of doors and that the doors to the retail should be frameless and flush and be made of the same glass as the skin. And Community Board, one also weighed in, and they recommend that the commission reject this application. But I think they're talking about the clear glass, and maybe you can just explain that a little bit further. Okay.
Explanation and response. Explanation. Earlier on, there was a proposal. The proposal was to do the new storefronts in clear glass. That has been changed. It's bronze glass to match the others. Perhaps people here, Documomo, et cetera, know more about the building code than our architect does. But our reading of the code is that having a three-foot door projecting entirely out from the building, three feet when it's open, is not a compliant or a responsible way to treat these doors. I would also add that it is, I think, a truism that we're seeing more and more lately, particularly with Skidmore, Owings, and Merrill buildings, that these buildings were designed under a corporate ethos that had entirely to do with the buildings being corporate headquarters, which meant that if there was any retail use on the ground floor, it was extremely limited. Corporations simply do not operate that way now. There are any number of buildings from the 50s and 60s that have had that evolution over time toward gradual openness as the uses of the building and the approaches of the corporations have changed, as the buildings and the corporations have opened up. And those changes have quite frequently been done by the same architects who designed the buildings originally. I think that what we are doing here is a thoughtful and respectful response, both to the original character of this building, to the doors that have been installed over time, to the needs of proper code compliant ingress and egress, and to the larger history of what has happened to these modernist corporations and their modernist buildings over time. We think, in short, that even though this is not a restoration, or worse, as far as I'm concerned, an attempt to make doors look like something they're not, we still feel that this is a highly appropriate response to this building.
All right. Any questions for the applicant? All right. I think that some of the testimony we heard today is helpful. And I would say, for me, I think the idea of having fewer interventions is better. So there are four doors. I don't know if I'm completely convinced that you need both the doors at the corner of Cedar and, and I think it's, what is it?
Liberty.
Liberty, sorry. Cedar and Liberty. And I would suggest that in terms of just the frame and the hardware around the door, that they really try and make it as light as possible. And so one thing is that these were, these areas were glazed. And so I think in our minds, in our memory, we see a door and then we see a lot of glass. And I think it'd be helpful to have, even if you introduce the doors, to have them as light as possible. And I would be okay with the team working with staff to do that. But I do recognize that the nature of these buildings have changed over time. And just from an urban design and planning perspective, I think the idea of activating these spaces is good for lower Manhattan, which has clearly changed. And the fascinating thing about these modern buildings are they made very, very strong statements, very much about the, almost the simplicity of its shape and form rising. And sometimes these buildings, in terms of how they meet the ground and their pedestrian environment, is very stark. And so I think that there are ways to introduce these openings and have retail and still be respectful to, I think, the architectural vocabulary of the building. But I think I could find that appropriate. Other comments?
Yeah, I don't think that horizontal bands of any kind are, either humanize the scale here or are respectful, as you were saying, to the design of this building. And I completely recognize that use needs to be changed if necessary, but I really think that there's a very specific design intent here. And it's, you know, I mean, I think it's even evidenced in the fact, and for me, the concern is less the glazing than this kind of the verticality of the panels. So in the cases here where there are louvers systems, I don't know what's behind the louver, if it's mechanical systems on the ground floor in the existing, do you know what I'm referring to? There are some panels that are louvered.
Ventilation.
Ventilation. Yeah. So those two are vertical. So they might be solid. In other words, they're not made of glass, but they still maintain that, the kind of the geometry and the proportioning system of that full base, which is 11 feet high underneath, you know, the first horizontal band. And I think it's really important to keep that intact, which is not to say no doors and it's not to say no glass or no opaque panels, but that the full vertical height of 11 feet is important.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think the verticality, the glazing is more important to me. And there's this one-dimensionality to the sides of the building that is created by this entire flatness from top to bottom. And I was, and although, and I'm certainly not the architect here, so I know nothing about code, but I kept, I think I'm hearing something a little hesitant about whether these doors actually have to be recessed or they're not. And, you know, there's an interpretation involved. And so I just want to be sure that staff agrees with that interpretation, that indeed, even though these doors are on a plaza, that in fact there is a requirement, they actually have to be recessed. And I'm, obviously, I'm not, I know nothing about these code rules. So, but as long as staff is satisfied that that's the right interpretation.
Yeah, we'll have to check. We didn't find that as an issue.
Right, okay. Other comments?
Just, here's one other question. I don't know the width of that space in front of the plaza where the doors are opening, but if it's, if there is, it's possible that if you had like a flush door section, if those were flushed and they still had to open out there, you could have, I'm not seeing this done, like a little, very minimalist kind of railing thing just in the ground that sticks out so that the doors open, the door surroundings all flush with the building, and yet the openings are somewhat protected on the sidewalk. This. You just. This, I'm just saying, if it's necessary for the glass.
Okay, other comments? Yes?
Yeah, I actually feel there are too many design details with regard to the doors that I don't, I don't think there should be a staff approval. I think they should come back and just show us what they're going to do. It's an individual landmark. And, well, personally, I don't feel comfortable with approving what's presented. I also agree that there should just be two doors, but I'd actually like to see what they propose to address the various comments of several different commissioners, and they're all, they're not, it's a tough, it's a tough thing to give to the staff, just because it's kind of complicated, I think, really, but that's my opinion.
Okay. Other comments?
I would agree with that. It's an individual landmark.
Right, and I would just say from my part, it was, and that's why I felt it's appropriate, it was, I think the panels themselves and how the general design wasn't, I think I could support that, it was just that really the thickness of these elements were very heavy. But others may not agree to that, and we can ask them to come back. I don't think there's any issue with that. But one of the things I was just thinking, if this is all about the verticality, then are there different ways to treat the transition between the glass and the transom and the doors without...
Could be.
Frames? So I don't know, we've seen other situations, and I don't know whether that would address it. Because I think you want, I think there's a concern about these horizontal breaks where it should be more seamlessly vertical, so it's a question for the architects to at least explore that.
I think there are options, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what we need to see.
Okay, all right.
All they'll have to do is show us the doors, so...
Show us the doors, okay. So we're gonna, any other comments?
And maybe just some Bunshaft drawings.
Right, if you can get the original doors, it could actually maybe solve the mystery for us.
Surely, skidmore and some barrels has got, Merrill has got to have it, I would think, but...
Okay, so we can close the hearing. And we can take a break. Is it a short one?